Call tonight's meeting to order.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as it reads.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay. Moving on to updates from our council liaison.
Good evening, planning commissioners, Jim Smith, East Bethel City Council. On our December ninth meeting, we approved the twenty twenty-five budget levy approved, we approved that. We also approved the EDA budget levy for twenty twenty-five. Twenty twenty-five for the HRA budget levy approved also. The fire department, we approved a five hundred dollar increase on their retirement. So now that means that they're up to eight thousand a year, which is pretty cool. And then we approved three variances. One was a setback variance for thirty-five sixty-four Edmar Lane. We approved that in the second driveway variance, one nine four zero eight East Front Boulevard. And then the property split, four two six Birch Road. That's all I got.
Excellent.
So Merry Christmas to you guys.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you for your time on the council. Uh, as you guys change over next month, right? This will be your last month as our liaison?
I don't know, I have no idea.
I think he usually changes over around January, but.
Somewhere, yeah, somewhere in there.
Just thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jen. Um, on to the approval of minutes.
I have no changes.
No changes?
No changes.
None?
Diana was not in attendance.
Okay. Take a motion to approve the minutes from November twenty-sixth.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, we will move on to our public hearing.
Mister Chair and members of the commission, um, wanted to just, uh, set this up a little bit here and, um, uh, give a little background on the reason why we're here this evening. This is an ordinance of the city of East Bethel, uh, mending Appendix A zoning to regulate cannabis and hemp business and amending Chapter eighteen, providing for the registration of cannabis and hemp business businesses in the city. You'll recall the state of Minnesota legalized, uh, recreational marijuana. And, um, and as I understood, there were supposed to be some rules coming forward from the state, which, um, didn't quite materialize. And so as we get to the beginning of the year, when supposedly these, um, uh, these licenses are going to be, um, offered through the Office of Cannabis Management, um, that kind of leaves cities municipalities in a, in a situation at that point, where if they're authorizing, uh, businesses like this, cities need to have ordinances in place to kind of get their arms around how, how they're going to, uh, control this. Um, so we have, uh, our attorney here this evening who has drafted this, but just in terms of going over some of the, uh, high points here, the city of East Bethel's, um, has the authority to adopt the ordinance pursuant to Minnesota State Statute three forty-two point one three C, regarding the authority of a local unit of government to adopt reasonable restrictions of time, place, and manner of the operation of a cannabis business. And this is all done to protect public health, safety, and welfare. Uh, we get into definitions there in terms of what a cannabis business is, or cultivator, an event, manufacturer, miso business, micro business, retailer, testing facility, wholesaler, hemp business, and so on, as you can read there. Um, this, uh, these definitions would go into the ordinance. Um, and then under the various different sections that would be, uh, modified, uh, for whether if you're a cultivator, or you're a low potency, uh, edible retailer, or again, if you want to hold an event, or if you're a retailer. All that's kind of, um, identified in the various different sections that would need to be modified. Um, and then it goes into also the application, the approval, compliance checks, renewal of registration, renewal fees, application, suspension of registration, length of suspension penalties, and those type of things. And again, um, I, I kind of just a little bit because I think it was Nancy Pelosi who said once, uh, we should, we should pass this before we know what's in it, referring to a bill, uh, uh, in Congress. Um, this is not that, uh, type of a scenario. I think, uh, passing this or promoting this to, to the, uh, city council, uh, would, um, would basically get something, um, on the books. And how that plays out then in the future? You know, whether there, we need to tighten things down or loosen things up in the future. Obviously ordinances can be changed at any point. And, uh, and so that's, um, that's kind of getting something down on the books here before the first of the year. So Mister Chair, if you'd like, I know there's a, um, presentation, uh, PowerPoint presentation here this evening that Christina would like to provide.
Absolutely, take it away, thank you Christina.
Do we want to wait till the presentations over to open the public hearing once they've heard?
Yep.
Help answer questions? For anyone who might be listening and not knowing why it's not open.
They're going to come rushing in the door.
Yes.
Yeah, I did almost forget that at one meeting, so we'll come back to that. All right. Yeah. Um, I've been doing a lot of these, so I'm Christina Benson, I work with Eckberg Lammers, I'm a city attorney for quite a few cities, and I have been doing all of the cannabis stuff for all of our clients. Um, so this is, uh, my probably last cannabis presentation. It's been honed as I've worked through it with multiple councils and planning commissions. And what we've worked it down to is when you're looking at this tonight, a lot of control is still at the state level, but there's really only five areas where the cities do have control, and that's what we'll be looking at tonight. So the first one is whether or not to adopt a registration ordinance, and if so, what you'd like in it. The second question is whether you want to limit the number of basically cannabis retail in the city, whether it's retail at a cannabis retailer, a cannabis miso business, or a cannabis micro business. The next decision is whether you want to have distance requirements from certain types of youth-oriented facilities and residential treatment facilities for cannabis businesses or for hemp businesses. Um, the next one is whether and what performance standards you'd like to have for cannabis and hemp businesses. And then finally, of course, zoning district placement. So at the start of this, I'd like to kind of go over some terminology. This is a very technical area. Part of it is because when this was adopted at the legislative level, um, it doesn't really fit well with what is currently, um, allowed to be sold and what's going to be sold. Um, and there's a lot of terminology that is easy to get lost in it. So when we're talking about cannabis, we mean actual cannabis. The cannabis flowering plant, an immature plant, um, the really high potency stuff. Then when we're talking about a cannabis product, that's something where cannabis concentrate has been extracted, or a cannabinoid that has been artificially derived, has been put into something, um, is, um, and is containing THC. The last thing is cannabis business. And the point of having this in there is when we're using the term cannabis business, we're not just talking about retail, we're talking about any type of business. So when we're saying distance from facilities for cannabis businesses, we mean retailers, cultivators, manufacturers, transportation, testing facilities, events, and delivery services. So cannabis business means everything, not just retail. The next thing is edible cannabinoid products, that's what's sold right now. It's different than the lower potency hemp edible. Um, so edible cannabinoid products, that's what we're seeing in shops being sold, that's what we're seeing at a brewery when you're going out and seeing the THC beverages. Those are edible cannabinoid products, and they have much greater limits on what can be contained in them, and lower potency even than the lower potency hemp edible. Then we have the lower potency, um, for hemp business. When we're saying hemp business, we're not talking about cannabis businesses. We're not just talking about retailers, we're talking about both lower potency hemp edible manufacturers or lower potency hemp edible retailers. And just again, we're not talking about what's being sold right now, because there are no hemp businesses currently operating right now. Um, and just because this question does come up in an area where you do have agriculture, what we're talking about tonight does not impact those who are licensed by the state of Minnesota for hemp agricultural activities. This is completely different and distinct, the city does not have control over that. We're really talking about very different things tonight. Um, that is a concern that some people might bring. The next thing is when we're talking about hemp. Uh, the biggest difference between hemp and cannabis is the potency. They look pretty much the same, but a hemp plant, a hemp plant has way less THC in it. So let's say it's not an exact ratio, but let's say you have a thousand pounds of hemp create one unit of THC. One pound of hemp would create one unit of THC. That's what we're talking about, it's way more potent, um, cannabis than hemp, but otherwise they're basically the same thing. And once the THC is extracted from it, I'd love to hear what the difference is. Um, then we've got the lower potency hemp edible. And you can see here, it's a much longer definition than that edible cannabinoid. Um, so it's lots of words, that's why I left it in there though, so you can see it's longer. There's a lot more things that can be in it, including artificially derived cannabinoids, which are currently prohibited by state law. Um, those will be allowed, you can have more than five milligrams, you can have five milligrams plus twenty-five milligrams, um, and so on and so forth. All right, so now this is going to be talking about scope. When we're talking about these tonight and how you're going to be regulating these things, we're really talking about right now and in the next year, because it will probably make sense to revisit this in a year. But for now, and until twenty twenty-six, this is the number of licenses that are available. There are only fifty cultivator licenses, twenty-four manufacturer licenses, a hundred and fifty retailer licenses, and a hundred miso business licenses. For the other types of things, like a micro business, a testing facility, those types of things, there is not a limit in statute, but the office has the discretion to choose how many are issued. But when we're talking about, again, these retailers, miso businesses, there's only going to be a hundred and fifty retailers in the entire state of Minnesota until twenty twenty-six, a hundred miso businesses until twenty twenty-six. So we're not looking at a big boom of these, um, other than, um, in twenty twenty-six when we'll, we'll see those changes. So now I'm going to talk about a little bit more so you can picture what these businesses look like. When we're looking at a cannabis retailer, they can sell to cus- consumers everything. Everything from cannabis plants down to what's currently being sold. Um, cannabis plants, flowers, cannabinoid products, lower potency hemp edibles, and then other products authorized by law. There is a state requirement that they have proper ventilation and filtration for odor control, but the law specifically points out there's likely to be, and you're welcome to have local requirements, um, for the odor. The other thing is that the state law regulates that sales, um, may not take place between two AM and eight AM. The city has the option to extend that to ten AM, but you don't have the option to extend it any more than that for cannabis. A micro business is something that the best comparison I use is like a micro brewery. This is a place where it's smaller, they have, um, they can grow cannabis there, make the concentrate, package it, manufacture it, and sell directly to consumers, all in one site. Um, you can see how big these can get. And the other thing that this is the only type of business that you can permit onsite consumption of cannabis products. Um, so that's where again, it's a like to a micro brewery. Um, the only thing, as you can see on here, regardless of what you decide, they can't permit smoking or vaporized delivery methods. That's already taken care of, that's already prohibited at a state level. Then we have a miso business, and I compare this to more like a surly sized brewery. However, you can't have onsite consumption, but it's, they can still sell to consumers, they just can't drink it or eat it or whatever at the location. A much larger, up to ten thousand pounds, three times the amount, three times the amount of square feet, um, canopy indoor, they can have up to one acre outdoor, they can make concentrate, manufacture, package, label, and they can sell both to consumers and other cannabis businesses. Then we have a cannabis event. And a cannabis event specifically, I can't remember if it's in the rules that are proposed or the law, but it, it requires that you get local approval before you can have a cannabis event. So that's something that's really in the city's control. What you don't have control over is that the event access, you have to be twenty-one years of age. Um, there has to be a designated retail area. The one thing that is up to you to control, um, is onsite consumption. You as a city can decide, nope, you can't have onsite consumption. If you do allow it, the onsite consumption area has to also be designated, cut off, um, so that there's an entrance, exit, security protocols, and all of those things. You can set things about, um, location, hours, noise, signage, and those types of things, which you'll see in the ordinance that's before you tonight.
And in a comparable, it'd be like a, a craft brew fest?
Yes. Although for those, you can have it, um, like for beer dabler at the state fair. It's a wide open area where you're consuming and purchasing. This would be a much smaller area where the retail consumption and, um, purchases have to be taking place. So it's really, really, um, locked tight, um, even more than we would see for a brewery festival or any type of festival where, um, like a community festival where someone might be able to have a, a beer license. These are really more restricted by the state. Again, for just picturing what these look like, this is again for all cannabis businesses. They have to have an alarm system that's audible within a hundred foot radius, video surveillance, lighting, motion sensors, locks, and there's fencing required for outdoor cultivation. You have the option, it's not proposed tonight, but you can require fencing if you'd like, um, for non-outdoor cultivation as well. Um, and I just have a note here, the Office of Cannabis Management has explicitly stated that you can't have a cannabis or hemp business occurring in a dwelling. If you're paying attention, some news stories have come out, people are challenging whether they can sell the stuff they grow for themselves under an agricultural exception, but that wouldn't be considered a cannabis or hemp business, it's a distinct thing, um, from what we're talking about tonight.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So under all those rules they have there, who will be checking them and enforcing?
Yeah, um, and I had it and I took it off, um, these are enforced by the Office of Cannabis Management.
So they'll go out once a year, whatever?
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky.
Um, yeah.
So.
Local law enforcement can report it, anyone can report it. I'm sure if they receive a report, they're more likely, um, to take action on that. They have already been taking some action, but of course this is going to get much larger scale very quickly. Um, but, yeah, the city doesn't have any authority, other than we'll have a little bit of authority with the registration ordinance with suspension capabilities when we're talking about violations. Um, but you can only suspend for a certain period of time and you cannot revoke, um, what, which is all stuff that, um, is at the, the Office of Cannabis Management level. That's a really great question. Um, these are some of the environmental requirements. The reason I put all of these out there is to point out, they're not really having additional requirements. They're just referring generally, like, whatever is already in the pollution control rules, the same stuff applies. So there's not heightened requirements for these, um, if you'd like to have any sort of heightened requirements. And the other thing, and you can see bolded, um, they explicitly are expecting local unit of governments to be controlling some odor standards. Then we have a lower potency hemp retailer, and this is a really nuanced one. So they're selling lower potency hemp edibles, they can't sell cannabis, anything lower potency hemp edible and below, they can. At a lower potency hemp retailer, they can have onsite consumption if they have an endorsement, which we know nothing about. Um, the Office of Cannabis Management has not elaborated on what that process will be, other than statute does say that the office shall issue an onsite consumption endorsement to any retailer that also holds an on-sale liquor license. So that's why you'll see in your ordinance, the accessory use in a lot of your districts, and that's to encompass the on-sale liquor licensees in your city. So if someone has a bar, a restaurant, a club, any type of those things where they're selling beer, it's permitted as an accessory use to be a lower potency hemp retailer if you have a liquor license. So that's why you see that accessory use in there, it's saying, I mean, you can't just like flip around and become a lower potency hemp retailer, but you can keep being a restaurant and selling beer. You can also sell these seltzers, for example. All right, so this is where we're going to get into, um, some of the details. So, um, this is to demonstrate all of the things that are covered by the state and the limited things that you have control over, which I kind of introduced at the beginning. Registration, making choices about distance from certain facilities, hours of operation, um, performance standards, and then what types of districts you want to allow these. All of these other things are, um, like licensing, revocation, eligibility is taken care of at a state level, and you do not have control over them. So coming back, these are the five questions again that we're looking at tonight. The registration ordinance would be both for cannabis and hemp businesses, um, not just, um, one or the other. You, I suppose, have the option to just do one or the other, but I recommend doing both. This is for retail sales, whether it's at a, um, lower, uh, a restaurant, or whether it's a full-blown dispensary, or a miso business, or a micro business. They would have to get a registration from the city. You don't really get to pick the fee. Um, the option is to have an initial retail registration fee of up to five hundred dollars, or half the amount of the applicable, um, initial license. And I'm pretty sure almost none of them reach five hundred dollars. Um, so we're looking at about a hundred and seventy-five dollars that you'd be able to collect for that initial registration fee. And then the renewal fee is higher. Um, there are a couple that get to that a thousand level, um, but most of them are about three hundred, um, for that license fee. And as part of that, if you adopt a registration ordinance, the local unit of government must conduct unannounced age verification compliance checks at least once per year. You can have additional compliance checks than that, um, but this is what you're required to do at a state level. They did make a change, they were going to require the local unit of government to check that you're compliant with all of the OCM and statutory standards, but, um, there is a lot of advocacy that, you know, that's a lot for local law enforcement to take on. Um, so that scaled back, and now you're just required to do it, um, for the, um, if you're registering them and for age.
Can I ask, would we, would that be like the sheriff?
Yes.
Office that we hire to patrol, they would be the ones to go out and do these checks?
Controlled by for liquor.
Right.
Yeah, it's likely that's who would do it, but hopefully, um, and I believe the way I've drafted it in your ordinance is just that the city is going to conduct them. So some barriers that cities have for conducting compliance checks is availability of law enforcement officers. So you can have a non-law enforcement officer also doing these compliance checks. So that's something that is unique and helpful to have, um, in this particular requirement. Um, and we can, I'm trying to decide with the public hearing, do you want to hold a brief discussion? Okay, so is everyone thinking this is the registration ordinance is a good idea? Any questions about the registration ordinance at this time?
At this point, no.
Okay.
I, I've got other things, but we'll get there.
Perfect. All right, so then the next question that you'll have is whether you want to limit the number of cannabis retailers, cannabis miso businesses, and cannabis micro businesses. Um, so it would be if, so they're a cannabis miso business, this is not something that's worked out in the law at all, but they can have the miso business operation where they're cultivating, manufacturing in a separate location than their retail. So if they do that, then you can't limit the number of that cannabis miso business from taking place in your city. So cannabis miso business could open up beyond what this limited number is, they just couldn't conduct sales at that location. Um, but if they choose to have it at that location, which I'm anticipating a lot of them will, because, I mean, that's part of the draw, right? Um, with these smaller micro, um, breweries and stuff like that, is that you're at the location where it's being made. But who knows? Um, so I just want to be very clear that we're talking about places where cannabis can be sold. It might be connected with a miso or micro business, but it could also be separate. If you choose to limit this, you can limit it down to one, but you can also pick any other number. You're just required to allow at least one. So I have a couple cities that are saying, yep, we want to do the bare minimum, one for every twelve thousand five hundred. And I've had some other cities, um, that have, I think they did six, and their population about four thousand. So it really has varied, um, from city to city about whether they're doing this and how many they're allowing. Any questions here? All right. The next thing is distance requirements from youth-oriented facilities and residential treatment facilities. So what I did is, it's not the most trustworthy source, but it's what we've got. The state has a list of where schools and daycares and all of those things are located. There are some issues with, um, there might be ones that exist that I don't know about, simply because the state is inconsistent. Um, the easiest example, Oak Park Heights Stillwater High School, right there in Oak Park Heights, but it's listed as it being in Stillwater. Um, so it didn't show up when I tried to pull up their list of schools. So if you know of any schools that are located within your city limits, um, beyond what I have up here, it's very possible that that's a thing, um, but I, I've gone off of what we could get. There's also a state register through the Department of Human Services for daycares, and these are all of your daycares in the city. And this includes home daycares in addition to like those separate, more commercial looking ones that we see. And then we have no known residential treatment facilities within your city. And, um, we have quite a few parks, which you probably know, um, in your city. The five hundred feet and a thousand feet that you're seeing here, that's the max that you can do in statute. You can do less than that, a lot of cities have done less than that, but I've also had a lot of cities, um, when we're talking about zoning and these distance requirements, it's a lot easier to start with a thousand and five hundred and come back next year and say, no, that's too much. We want to scale it back or take them out altogether. But if you decide next year you'd like to implement these distance requirements, you're going to have legal nonconformities. So you're going to have a challenge actually implementing that if someone opens up.
So the one, one thousand feet and five feet, that's the maximum that, okay.
Yep.
And that's from the state?
Yes, that's the state statute.
And that's, is it interchangeable, or, you know, specifically this five hundred feet from, you know, the, um,
Oh, I can go back.
Treatment facilities? Because it, we couldn't say a thousand feet from treat.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, it's up to a thousand from school, there's ambiguity about whether you want to do it from a principal school building or the blot lines. Um, I've just kind of drawn up, um, you'll see it in a minute here, um, as best I could on GIS, just kind of a circle. Um, but a lot of cities choose, um, to do it based on what you have for your liquor, um, for measuring five hundred feet. All right, so this is what I put together, it's not perfect. Um, five hundred feet is about eighteen acres, so you can see I got pretty close on most of these. Um, and then, um, a thousand feet is about seventy-five acres, according to conversions, um, oh, there we go, online. So the green here, those are your two schools. The purple, and there's some purple up here, um, those are the daycares. And the blues, oh, where'd my cursor go? There we go, the blues are your parks. Um, so I have a, a map where I've kind of overlaid this, and I have a closer up view, and we can always circle back to these when we get to your discussion. Um, but this is kind of, uh, where these, these are in your city. Um, so here's a little closer up, I believe this is the south portion of the city first, where you can see there's some overlapping daycares, lots of parks. Got some, the schools are close to.
You're missing a school on the north end, Cedar.
Okay.
Elementary, that just, where those kind of reddish dots are next to your Magnify.
Right here?
Uh, nope, north, 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 northwest.
Oh, here?
Yes.
Okay.
That's a, that's an elementary school.
Okay. So that would be, you know, you can kind of see how big that circle is, probably about here, wouldn't quite reach sixty-five. But it would go and overlap the Sims Road northeast.
And this is for all cannabis business, this is not just retail, retail would be?
Correct, this is all.
Yep.
And then, um, and you can do it for hemp businesses too, if you'd like. A lot of cities haven't decided to do that because they've decided to treat hemp like, like liquor. Um, and if you don't have, um, distance requirements for on-sale liquor, which is pretty common, um, they're, because that's who's going to be selling these, um, most, uh, regularly, they haven't had those restrictions. Um, and then this is the north half of your city. Couple blues, purples. Um, but again, I have more, um, then we have performance standards, what we've included, um, restricting signs to only words. There's a lot of concerns about big leafy green flashing signs, and, um, kids seeing those and thinking, oh, what is that over there for sale? I'm interested in that. Um, so the, the balance that's been struck there is, for now, to keep these from having those types of flashing symbols or trying to come up with a creative symbol that looks like hemp, what they're saying isn't hemp, is to just allow words, and for these businesses to really just look like any other business and non-distant. Um, placing hours of operation limits on them, again, for now, odor restrictions, noise restrictions, and then the security one is, um, related to bars on windows. Cities have had an interest in not having bars on windows because they don't like the look that that makes, um, kind of it feel when you're walking into those businesses or seeing those businesses. So what that, um, is drafted as is they, um, have to be on the interior, and they have to be open during open hours of business, so they can have bars when they're closing at night, and they can put them down, but they can't be on the exterior and not during business operations. All right, so now we're going to talk about zoning districts of where these are drafted. I just looked at existing uses and kind of went with that, and of course, we can always adjust them. All of these, except for cannabis events and lower potency, are considered conditional uses at that time. I think this makes sense, um, because these are really unique type of business, they're more potent than liquor, this is something that we don't have before, and in order. And in order for these to really fit into communities, um, it has to be nuanced and go through the conditional use permit process. So that it fits the community. So when we're talking about your rural residential district, which I have a picture on the next slide. Um, a cannabis cultivator would be permitted here, um, so your rural residential, or, right, that's what it was. Yep, that's all the yellow, and do you see I've overlaid the circles as best I can? Um, it was, I'm pretty proud of this, you guys, um. So you can kinda see that, um, you do have some daycares and stuff in there, um, but those would be allowed in the rural residential um, district. The next thing we have, um, and that's because nurseries and stuff like that are permitted. We have the limited business district, and here a cannabis event is permitted outright. Again, the reason for that is they're gonna come to you for local approval and a permit anyway, why make them get a conditional use permit? And like an event permit, so they're permitted there, um, a lower potency hemp edible retailer is allowed as an accessory use. Without having to get a conditional use permit, if you're at a place with a valid liquor license. And then finally, um, a cannabis retailer and a lower potency hemp edible retailer would be permitted here, um, under a conditional use permit. And this is. B one, I believe it, come on cursor, these guys over here.
Yep.
I guess you've got a couple. Throughout.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, then we have the central business district, and here again, cannabis event permitted, lower potency hemp, if you have a liquor license. And then um, a micro business with a micro brewery, and then a cannabis retailer and a lower potency hemp edible retailer. Would be permitted under conditional use there. And that's here. Along um, sixty-five, and again, you don't have to take these recommendations, this is just based on what's currently allowed. You could also make a choice, um, this was a discussion, to not, uh, in other cities, to not allow it along the freeway. And to, so that it didn't look like you're driving into cannabis central, um, and so they wanted it to be pushed back. From the main drag, um, but some are, actually, there are cities who want to be that main drag. Um, to get that, that business in, um, but just, that's, we're talking about B two, the pink. Then we have your highway commercial district, which is your B three, again cannabis event, lower potency hemp edible retailer with liquor license. And there's some expansion here, so you can have a cannabis cultivator, a mezzo business, and a testing facility in addition to retail in the B three. And it's a little, here we go, the brown, so we've got some here, some here, and some up here. And again, we can come back to these. Then we have your light industrial, and um, I haven't mentioned this yet, you can't outright prohibit these. In your city, so you have to have a place for everything somewhere, so your light industrial district is where some have been. Um, placed simply because they have to be allowed somewhere, and that would be the manufacturing, so again, you can have a cannabis event. You can have the liquor license, lower potency hemp edible retailer, and you can do anything else. Um, under a conditional use in your light industrial district, which is that other gray. Looking color. Up here. And then we have finally your mixed use district, and here again cannabis event, um, as an accessory use, you can have, um, you didn't have accessory use before. That's why this one looks a little different than the other ones, um, in the mixed use district, so we've added accessory uses. Um, and then uh, micro business and then both types of retailers are permitted by conditional use. And that is, come on cursor, right in here. And you've, do have your schools um, touching there. Alright, so those are all of the items that we'll be discussing tonight. Um, if you wanna ask questions now, otherwise we could do the public hearing and do more questions after that.
Yes, yes, I agree, um, let's hold the public hearing, if uh, if you want to speak tonight, please come up, state your name and address into the microphone. At this point, since no one's coming forward, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. So.
Do we wanna have discussion first, or we wanna have a motion and then discussion?
Let's, I'd like to, yeah, have some discussion here. I am, I do have some questions about some of the um, performance standards, what type of uh, systems are in place for like odor control? I've.
At a state level or in your ordinance?
Oh, well, both.
So at a state level, it's the same as any other business, there's not additional um, types of ventilation that they're required to include, um. It's the same as if you're building any other building, um, the standards that would apply, I must be touching something. The, what we have drafted um, in your ordinance is that they have to be ventilated. So that all odors cannot be detected by a person with a normal sense of smell at the exterior of the facility. Or at any adjoining use or property, so let's say it's like a strip mall, um, you can't ha- be able to smell it at the adjoining facility. Um, and then you can't be producing noxious or dangerous gases or otherwise create a danger to any person. Um, in or near the facilities.
So these would be like carbon type filters?
Sure.
Where they're running through it, it can minimize quite a bit from what I've.
Right, right.
Researched.
And, and there was only one specific place that um, would allow like onsite consumption, but this, is this considered? Just for edibles, or is that?
This would be for all facilities, and the big thing there is, no matter what form cannabis is in. It has an odor, um, so regardless of whether they're cultivating or selling the flower. Um, it's going to carry an odor, they'll of course need greater um, filters like he was talking about, um, if they're cultivating. I've heard, um, it's pretty bad, I know someone who grows it in their basement, um, a client actually. Uh, very officially, like into the whole thing, but his, uh, his wife's like, I'm, I'm gonna move out if you don't find somewhere else to do this. Um, so it's, it's quite, quite potent.
Sure, yeah, and that's.
Are they using a fil- filtration?
Oh, yeah, his neighbors, he's got it because you have to have it on lockdown.
So he's out producing what the filter will, will filter out.
And it's not smelling outside, okay?
Um, not outside his property, I would say it's probably a little bit right on his property, um, he's now purchasing agricultural land.
Sure, so in, in. In violation of any of these performance standards, the city would only be allowed to suspend a license for a time?
So we could suspend, but they would have to, these types of businesses would have to get a conditional use permit.
Right.
So that's where we would have that control to suspend their conditional use permit and pull that, um, which is stronger than. The license and registration controls that we have.
That's why they use that vehicle.
Sure, is that something that can happen indefinitely, say that, you know, you suspend it for the thirty days? And then, you know, day two of them having it reinstated, they're violating again and you, okay.
Yeah, so that's for the registration, but if you're having an odor issue, I would probably recommend the city, um, you know, you would have. In your conditional use permit, it just says you have that you have to be in compliance with all of your laws. Imagine as part of that conditional use permit process, you'd also be having conversations with the applicant about what systems they're actually going to be using. And you'd have the opportunity at that phase as well to introduce additional controls if they are relevant to what's in your ordn- ordinance. But pulling and um, suspending a conditional use permit, you have a lot more strength in that. And they don't get to do it until they're back in compliance with the conditional use permit, instead of looking at a deadline.
Right.
It's a good vehicle for that.
Yeah.
Type of application.
Yeah.
And if somebody, let's just say somebody had a larger scale or something, we can, we can add into their specific condition.
Sure.
Whatever regulation we wanna.
Right, right.
Include as a result of.
Yeah, and they've got a lot more risk.
That's what gives us that flexibility.
Well, and I'm assuming that we could have our building department, um, our inspectors maybe educate themselves a little bit on the filtration. That um, some of the buildings use, I mean, we have a number of places like Green Goods in Blaine, that's right in a mall. And, and I know, you know, you can pull up there and you don't smell it, but the minute you walk in the door. But, you know, they could do some research, so I think um, the city just preparing a little bit in va- and in advance. To what departments within the ci- within the city are gonna be looking at, um, making sure that they're meeting the expectations. And following the rules and regulations, and then, you know, talk amongst themselves on what, what is gonna be the limit and. You know, if we do some pre um, work with the companies before they start and just let them know ahead of time, we are going to require that. You know, when somebody's driving by your building with their window open, we don't want them to smell, you know.
Welcome to East Bethel.
Welcome to East Bethel, right, so, and, and the only way that we can really. As a city, I think, set an expectation is if our own staff is a little knowledgeable about that, so, you know. We can't say, well, you can't have an order, and then when they say, well, how do we prevent that, we're like, well, I don't. You know, so, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm certain that, you know, the businesses have been out there enough now, where there's probably, even if we called. Um, the Office of Cannabis Management, they probably have some people that our building department could use as a resource to educate them on it. They probably have materials.
And theoretically, the Office of Cannabis Management will be reviewing, um, per, you know, as part of their application for the license, some of these things. Um, this is really a, they have a lot on their plate, so how thoroughly is that being reviewed? And then at a local level, being able to pull that conditional use permit as a mechanism beyond the state getting to the step of pulling their license. Oh, and I just wanted to add, as part of this conversation, as drafted, the activities are prohibited from taking place outdoors. Um, controlling the odor of a cannabis field is impossible, um, so at least for now, um, a lot of my clients. Are choosing, I think almost all of them, to require it be indoors. There's a little bit of risk with that, um, because the statute says that they can do outdoors under their license. But given there's no way to control that and that the odor itself also has health implications. Um, I think it's a very reasonable um, safety, health, welfare requirement, um, to, to keep these indoors. Um, until there can be some sort of control of the odor outdoors.
If restaurants can have a U L three, three hundred system for fire suppression, outfits can have air filtration systems. That do meet to whatever it is their operation hits, so it's just, it's a cost to doing business, and that's not. That's not our purview, so to speak, as much as it is our assistance to the public and what we, what we do as a city.
A lot of my questioning is more in curiosity how you contain that odor, cuz it is, yes, pungent.
Yeah, I will say that, um, I, ooh, back in twenty twenty, um, there was a conversation at the Minnesota Association of City Attorneys Conference. For the attorneys that had the medical cannabis facilities in their cities where they were cultivating, and they went through the conditional use, use permit process. They had these odor requirements, they wanted to expand, whenever odor would come up, they'd start working with the, the business again to try and challenge. Um, work through those challenges together, and things are going well for them, um, so I think that is something that's helpful to have. Um, and I reviewed their conditional use permits as part of drafting for all of the ordinances I've done, um, which. I think that, you know, having that experience with our other cities and as a state will set us up for success when it comes to odor, hopefully.
Yeah, they have a, in, in their um, guide, um, on page twenty-two, it talks. You know, about how they have um, an expedited complaint process specifically for the cannabis. And that the local governments may suspend the local retail registration of a cannabis business or hemp business. If the business is determined to not be operating in compliance with the local ordinance authorized by section three forty-two dash, or point thirteen. And that, once we suspend, we need to immediately just notify the O C M. And then they have an expedited complaint process, um, so that they can address these readily and. I suppose, offer a solution and get them up and running again, which is what the goal would be.
Yeah, these are businesses, doing business.
Yeah, yeah.
Have a unique nature. That we're exploring, yeah.
So as far as, again, back to performance standards, um, signage, um, what, what is written into this proposed ordinance regarding that? Is it um, talk about, you know, not having the flashing, you know. Appealing signs that are gonna draw on kids?
Yes, yeah, so this, um, I've done this for all of our clients, um, you have sections in your city code that already regulate signs.
Yep.
And so based on the district and the type of use, they can have a certain number of wall signs. Some other ones can have other types of signs also on the property, but when we're talking about these types of businesses. We're limiting them to those wall sign specific, um, signs, even if they're promoted more, if they were a different use. Here, they can only have the wall sign, and they're subject to the maximum size and height requirements of those two sections that are, or that. Range of sections that are listed there, and then we also have that signs shall only contain words and shall not contain. Or depe- contain depictions of cannabis flower, cannabis product, hemp edibles, hemp derived consumer product, or any other logo picture, image, or symbol. Intended or to denote, um, or suggest cannabis hemp or related paraphernalia, so we've kind of triple covered it there.
Yeah.
Only words, no images, and by images, we mean everything, but also explicitly these things. Um, part of that is, um, we started with the only words and people were like, what if they get creative with their words? Right, so they use words in the shape of a logo, and we're like, can't do that either, um, and then also a business logo. If you try to use that as an exception, that's also not going to work, you can't use your, say it's a logo in order to do it. And then additionally, um, no products, interior storage, or signage, um, advertisements or the like. Attention getting items shall be placed or displayed that may be visible for, from the exterior of the cannabis or hemp business. So there, we're talking about attention getting items like flashing signs or flashing lights generally. Um, and then finally, um, this was added at the last council I was with, um, they really wanted to be clear that. We're not just talking about the wall signs that you're allowed, um, again, you're not allowed to have anything but the wall signs, and by that we mean. Temporary signs, sandwich boards, et cetera, so it's a pretty lengthy one.
All encompassing.
But we've seen that people really wanna see the explicit, you can't have these redundantly in this.
Well, I do appreciate the way it's um. Funneling it to something more professional, you know, despite it being also recreational, it's not, you know, come party here. You know, it's not, I mean, you can do what you want at your house, but, you know, this, I, I can appreciate that.
At the end of the day, again, yeah, we have, remember, th- these are businesses.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I know one of the biggest, one of the biggest challenges we came across in the insurance industry, because before the me, I was making comment that. One of the bigger challenges that we have in the insurance industry is a lot of your standard carriers have put in cannabis exclusions into the insurance policies, but. Uh, just in my own research with this throughout my industry, one of the biggest things that they're talking about is there's going to be a lot of out of state. People trying to come in with product and otherwise, and they've, these are coming from states that have already been through similar and some even tighter restrictions. On them, so at the end of the day, these are businesses, and although that there is maybe a connotation of, let's just say, partying.
Yeah.
Behind this, the same could be said about liquor stores and alcohol, and we've seen how well that. Has done in that industry, whether they're beating neon signs or not neon signs, however, given the beginning of this, I can understand some restriction behind it. Uh, I think when some of the initial fad starts to, to fade out, I think we're gonna see a little more of a fine tuning of that and maybe a little less of. What has been stereotypically depicted in the past, is my personal opinion and somewhat of my professional of what I, what I see. Forecast, cuz again, they're in business to make money, not just.
Right.
Make a sale because it's something fun and new and.
Yeah, and I mean, you know.
What have you, they get, they, really, this is, these are no joke.
Yeah.
Businesses that, a lot of money behind this, I've, again, won't go into too much of a detail, but I've, I've seen a claim where. Even the types of businesses that maybe do the, that oil extraction. Five barrels might equal about three hundred grand. Just to give you a rough idea of what that can entail, so it's not just the party business behind it. Even though that's the connotation that most of us are used to.
Yeah.
It, like I said, they're very serious about this stuff, so even like we start talking about the scent, the smell, things like that. And you're nodding and agreeing, so I appreciate that, I would venture to say most of them that are actually serious about this are going to take the regulations extremely serious. And wanna run it professionally. That's my two cents on it.
Yeah.
There's a lot of money going behind this, and they're not gonna come in just to throw a, let's say, whatever the kegger equivalent would be.
Right, right, a bagger.
Yeah, there you go, a bagger.
Yeah, and, and I've seen, and I don't know if the city of East Bethel wants to add something in. Um, to our building department about this, but um, I've only been to two facilities. And usually they have a lobby, so you don't go into this building and look in the window and see their stuff. And they do that on purpose because that attracts people, migrants. And they do that on purpose because that attracts people, migrants. You know, so they're usually pretty secure, and what I've seen is there's usually like a clear window when you walk in and then a clouded window. And and many of them, um, have two sections where you can buy the recreational. And then the other one, and then the other section is for the medicinal purposes, and you literally have to show your ID. And prove that you're coming in to get a prescription, and then they bring you into a separate spot, so, um, which is. Obviously, if we're selling for recreation, you're not selling at the limit. That they're selling for medicinal purposes, so they keep them, um, separate. Um, I think those are things that the state would be okay with our building department having requirements that there's some separation, maybe in the building code.
Yeah, it's actually in state statute and and the OCM rules, so you could definitely, um, hone those as we see these. Um, but I will say, I think that for the most part, that's probably preempted for these, um, at the state level because they do have, you can only have certain products. Um, certain samples they can't actually contain, so like, you could have a gummy sample, but it can't contain THC. Um, and then in order to actually, the products can't be stored where you can grab them yourself to go make the purchase. They have to be, um, behind the counter regardless of whether it's lower potency hemp or the cannabis. Um, and they actually have to be in a secured, so it can't even just be, you know, doors and windows, like it has to be. You know, a passcode or whatever it is to get to the place, to get the stuff, to actually bring it to the point of sale.
I think, uh, my biggest concern is the odor, and, uh, are you familiar with the ordinances that were passed for odor? Older and Hastings Cottage Grove and Stillwater?
Um, I don't know, I did look at the Cottage Grove, um, conditional use permit, um, but I have not looked at those three, um, in particular.
Yeah, it was brand new, there was an article in the paper here, I actually brought it in, uh, pretty restrictive. They're making them buy a tool to take a reading inside and outside, they have to document it every day. And is that something we should pursue?
Uh, so I know the, um, the attorney who worked on those, um, I know those particular communities. I'm not sure the tool exists, I think is part of the thing, like, there are tools where you can measure, um, certain things in the air, but. As far as the the value in that, from my understanding, um, it's kind of, it's. It's not as scientific as a decibel meter that we have, um, and it's, it's not as reliable at. Um, being able to accomplish what you'd like to accomplish, whereas what we're trying to accomplish, and again, you have to. As a city, I don't wanna, you have to tailor it to what your goal is, so your goal here is to provide for the health, safety, and welfare. And when we're talking about that, the concern with that is that someone with a normal sense of smell can't smell it. Um, we're not concerned about particles in the air, um, that aren't going to be harmful to someone. Which I would, I'm not sure if those devices would be able to capture the normal sense of smell versus just having. You know, if I walk out there, can I smell it? Okay, then it's a problem, um, and I am also, as far as an enforcement mechanism. I would say that it's not necessary, if you can smell it, you have someone document that and you can move forward with that, I wouldn't say that that level of technology is. Necessary for enforcement purposes, those particular communities really don't want them in their cities. Um, so if you're a city that really doesn't want these businesses in your city, then, um, I think that would make sense to implement something like that and limit the number to one. Um, but if you're a city that wants to have, which I, councils go back and forth on this, um, throughout the evening, um, when we're having this discussion. Free market, or do we restrict it? Um, so I think really what's gonna come down to is you cannot adopt, um, restrictions like that, but what I'm finding is that the city councils that I've worked with. Would rather have businesses, um, be able to function and operate and kind of allow them to do what they're doing, and as long as. You can't smell it with a normal sense of smell, that's what we're looking for, um. That's going to be, um, something that is gonna deter businesses from that community, so if you want to deter them, which is totally valid. Um, that would be a mechanism for doing that.
I think they were just using it as a tool, so they were always thinking about it, they had to register. And yeah, they taught, they did talk about the the tool that's available, the cost, and how it was gonna be on the business to purchase it. And it was just something that they were gonna have to turn in quarterly or something to the cities.
Yeah, I'll also say your staff is not, um, necessarily, um, uh, those cities have huge staffs, right? Um, and that is a pretty big burden on staff to be actually checking those and following.
Staff wasn't doing it, no, the the business was gonna.
Oh, but they have to check to make sure the reports are compliant, is what I'm getting at.
Yeah, they were just gonna, you know, business was gonna do the testing, turn in the report. They could look, oh, you know, yeah, they're they're meeting it every day.
Yep, yeah, I think that's definitely an option.
But if you require that report, if the city makes a requirement, then we're required to document it and to file it so that it's. Open or publicly available, so if we're telling somebody that they have to meet these standards and they have to report these standards, then we have to have a staff person assigned. To filing and making sure that if we say this is the decibel or this is this. We have to have them check it off, saying, yep, they meet this, they meet this, and then that's gotta be filed, and then that's gotta be set aside, so that if at any point, somebody wants to call and ask. I want a copy of their January twenty twenty-three air report. Somebody has to be able to go get it and supply it, and then you have to add that to your retention schedule. And then that's gotta be added to your clerk's notice, so there's a whole bunch of administrative functions that are gonna be attached to every requirement that you put on that business for record keeping. Because if we require it, we have to document it and we have to retain it.
I would say, um, if you're looking at, let's say, a particular business where. They are right on the edge of that, let's say, thousand, you pick the thousand foot border, they're right on the edge of that. And that particular business, when they do their conditional use permit, you wanna add a condition about testing because there's kids right on the cusp of that. I think that would make a lot more sense to tailor it to a particular business application, um, but again, if you don't want a lot of these in your community. That's a totally acceptable choice, and that's something that would, um, could be used as a mechanism for that.
I think Route sixty-five could use a neighbor.
I think they have one, in a low dose.
Oh, what is it?
Smoke saloon, I think, so it's over there. I, yeah, I mean, as far as the smell, yeah, yeah, I'd I'd have a similar concern, um, I'm usually of the belief, though sometimes less is more. Um, the less restrictive we make it with a reasonable guideline, like reasonable sense of smell, et cetera. Is going to yield in our complaint-driven system that we already have, in my opinion, a better result than saying, here's the standard. Especially in something that's so new to try to set that goalpost, and then, should something change, always be moving that goalpost as opposed to. Maybe something a little more variable like, yeah, a reasonable, reasonable sense of smell, and or, again. Give them the opportunity to fail at it as opposed to saying, yep, we're gonna create your full standard all the way down the line because this is something. So new and to regulate, to try to put too much regulation on it, I agree, would become a deterrent. My personal belief is I'm not here to try to deter a business from trying to come in, but if they're gonna do it and do it in a reasonable manner, I. Don't see any reason why not, if it's within the legalities of the state and local regulations.
So do you have a lot more?
If there's, um, nope, this is the end of my presentation, so if you want me to kind of walk through the decision-making and you guys kinda wanna. Do some nods as we go through these, um, then, um, at the end of it, if you have any modifications, I can jot those in. Um, but that's kind of how I've done it for other cities is kind of open up the question. What are your thoughts on having a registration ordinance and having, um, you know, the highest fees that you're allowed to have, um, and having a pretty. Have everything that you're allowed to have in the registration ordinance.
I'd be in favor of it, one, yes, I I like the order you're going in, I'm not the chair, so I'm gonna leave that, Gabriel, to your direction if you like.
That makes it easy.
Thank you. Uh, sorry to jump in there.
No, 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 thank you, thank you.
Uh, I guess you have to jump into the first topic, yeah, I mean, definitely, it's, again, it is a business, they are there to make money. Uh, we are a city, again, we behold it to our residents to make sure we're doing it in a reasonable manner, and that's gonna require. Registration fees, half-time, et cetera, so whatever the maximum is, we can yield for. For that, for a business, cuz again, it's their cost of doing business to pass on to their clients if they so choose. Um, so yeah, whatever the maximum is, it'd be what I would be in favor on that piece in addition to being in favor of a registration ordinance.
I would definitely second that, yeah, I have no.
I have one question.
Yeah.
So, uh, we're talking about having, um, ordinances for those, but in particular, the item that we're doing tonight is just an ordinance to update and amend. The zoning.
Yes.
Right, so if we're gonna make a recommendation, um, to, or we're gonna consider. Creating other ordinances for like the noise and the smell and all of these other things. Um, wouldn't that be kind of dependent upon whether or not the council kinda wants to support it at this level now, I'm just curious, so. I'm just wondering if we sit and talk about adding those other ordinances tonight, if we're kinda jumping ahead. Since council hasn't, um, made a decision on this.
Well, this would all be adopted in one, um, night, yeah, and I can explain a little more than that, um, city administrator look kind of got into this, but. Um, there is a statute that says, um, once the Office of Cannabis Management has adopted their initial rules. Any business that's currently selling edible cannabinoid products is automatically licensed with a lower potency hemp edible retail license. So boom, you have, anyone who's currently selling in your city has a license. And at that stage, it's like, okay, who all does have a license, do we have, um, restaurants that have been using these? Um, liquor stores that don't have a cannabinoid permit, um, let's get our arms around that, and then also, if they start selling those. They're technically changing their use by adding an accessory use or by, um, becoming. In- instead of like, let's say a tobacco shop is doing it, and they're like, we're gonna stop selling tobacco because we've been selling these other products. Boom, you have a lower potency hemp edible retailer, so they really go hand in hand if you're gonna zone for these because. Having the registration ordinance really allows you to know where these businesses are. Given we aren't going to have that interaction with the Office of Cannabis Management before they start start operating. Unlike we will for the cannabis businesses.
Do we have any in town?
Yes.
Yeah, how many?
I don't know, are you doing your edible cannabinoid licenses? I don't know if you are.
Well, I mean, I know there's liquor stores that'll sell the THC, sell their products, um, there's at least two or three with that. Um, I think, yeah, smoke saloon, um, in addition to tobacco products and and I've got a big humidor or humidor room and. And then they've got the low potency, uh, vaping and edibles.
So if they're in compliance with your zoning that you adopt, they can start selling those products once that thirty day hits. And they're considered licensed, and you won't know about it unless you have this registration ordinance, really.
Yeah. And it, I think, just to your statement in that in the, in the, the city council versus us, just in in my history, in my tenure. It's typically been when we've had things that we've had to go volley back and forth, makes it more difficult to try to get something accomplished when. Taking the more rudimentary look of, if we work at the behest of city councils, so if we have the opportunity to go through these things now. And give our recommendation because we're not the final say in it, hey, based on the things we've gone through, here's the things that we're gonna recommend. They choose to either read into that or don't, or start from scratch themselves, that's on, that's on them.
Okay.
Right, it's, you know, part of being an advisory role, it's just advice, what they do with it from there, that's gonna be on them, so. For me, in my tenure, when we've had things like this, or power line transmission groups, or other.
They enjoy it, they enjoy more, more.
Yeah, easier to say, yep, we've gone through it of what we've seen, here's this, based on what we know, and then we'll let them take the ball from there as we hand it off. That's been my spot on that for what that's worth.
You've been on this commission for a while, so.
Couple of days.
Couple of days.
All right, so I will move on to the next question to resolve, um, which is limiting the number, um, so again, this is cannabis, not hemp. And it's not businesses, it's places where retail will take place, whether it's a cannabis retailer. At a mezzo business who's doing retail sales at the location, or a cannabis microbusiness that's doing retail sales at their location. If you'd like to limit the number, you can limit it as low as one, but you can increase it higher than that.
I mean, um, you know, we've already got, like you said, two, three doing, uh, you know, the.
Low end.
Lower potency hemp. Um, I mean, I wouldn't even know what number to begin with.
So this, again, we're talking, and this is super normal, we're talking cannabis, so those businesses. They would have to do complete reconstruction of their facility.
Right.
In order to become a cannabis retailer.
Okay.
So we're really not talking about those, we're not talking about liquor stores, it's, um, possible that tobacco stores are probably going to try to get that cannabis license. Um, but they would probably have to move, um, simply because a lot of facilities where, um, tobacco sales are taking place, they're just not large enough. Um, of capacity to incorporate the security requirements, we're really just talking about the highest potency retail type of stuff. These are not being sold right now, no one's, um, even remotely near selling these products right now.
So more or less to say, you know, we've got parties that are interested in heading in this direction currently, so to limit it to one, is that gonna be?
I would say too restrictive if you're asking my opinion. Uh, I think we have, we have a unique opportunity to put ourselves out there, and I'm not trying to say we wanna be the party city behind the stereotype. However. In my opinion, I don't know why we wouldn't want to open ourselves up to the possibility of whatever business may or may want to come in. And again, and if we don't like it, we have the option to use it, the conditional use. Tool that we have to limit and restrict, and if they can make that choice at that time, if they wanna comply or don't comply. That's kind of the, uh, to use a bad term, it's similar to planned unit development, right, gives us the the options to create the. The guidelines within based on what their business model is. So.
And it's fair.
Yeah, exact, yeah, so in a world of have it and not need it, instead of need it and not have it, if you make it so restrictive, we'll never have it. Give the option and we've got the tools to, uh, I don't wanna say restrict, I think that's the wrong word, but to. Help maintain proper gu- guidelines. Why not, and why make it so restrictive?
And you said there's only gonna be a hundred and fifty in the whole state?
Yep. But that doesn't talk about if, let's say, um, again, there's this endorsement thing that we don't know what they're talking about because they haven't really defined it. Um, that's a hundred and fifty cannabis retailers, and as you can see on the slide, we've got the cannabis retailers. But then we also have those mezzo businesses that could have a retail operation endorsement, and a microbusiness that could have a retail operation endorsement. Um, so there is a limit on the number of mezzo businesses, I believe it's fifty, but there is not a limit on the number of microbusinesses.
At all.
At all.
I think the the intent there was, again, trying to copy somewhat of the craft brewery model, or microbrewery model of those who want to. Dabble, for another beer term, those who want, those who wanna dabble, but again, do it within guidelines, I think the intent was not. From my history of reading on it, and you're gonna know better than I would, but the intent behind it again was. Just to allow those who want to introduce, but as long as you're willing to play the game, here's the rules.
Yeah.
And not be restrictive.
I'm kinda curious, um, being that it is so new, you know, and with the odors and and just. Our knowledge of the types of complaints and stuff that come to council and and come to the city. If it wouldn't be an advantage to maybe limit it for the first year, you know, say we're gonna try two. I mean, I don't think we should go to one, I think it, you know, to be fair, you should at least try two. Um, because the edibles and what the liquor stores are gonna be doing, they're just gonna be able to do it. You know, um, so this would be just for the cannabis, and and we couldn't we write it up in a way that we could state. That we are going to limit within the first year.
Yeah, you could draft it that way.
You know, draft it, we're gonna limit it within the first year, um, as a testing, since this is a new thing that in other cities is. And that allows the city to also educate themselves on the business and how it affects our city, it also, um, I think would make. Our residents a little bit comfortable, cuz we're gonna have people that are for this, and we're gonna have people that are really against it. Um, and then that will give us a time to come back to the public and say, hey, this is working well, we haven't had any complaints, there hasn't been this, there hasn't been that. And, you know, um, the council can talk about, well, do we want to restrict it for just a year? And make it kind of a probationary testing period, and I think from the way I read the statute. At any point in time, we can just come to the commission, change the ordinance and open it wide up. So, and that would just be, you know, one council cycle, so, um, that's the only. Um, reason I think we should limit it, because at least then we're telling our residents, hey, we're gonna look at this really deeply. We think it's a great opportunity, we think that we should support these businesses, the state's done all this work, we're confident it's gonna work. But we're gonna ensure the safety, we're gonna ensure the convenience, we're gonna ensure the compliance before we open it up bigger. And I I just feel, you know, as a parent, I'm thinking of, what are these people? The people that are gonna be most concerned are gonna be the people that have their kids in high school, and the kids are running around. East Bethel, people drive, I mean, you take your bike ten miles here in East Bethel, and you're not always in the view of your families. So I just think if we do, you know, and it's up to the council, but that would be my recommendation is to maybe say, if we do just the first year trial. And if things go well, kind of as a learning curve, because then we'll know what the two businesses that say we are smelling it. Then we'll know that if we are opening it up, we can go ahead and open it up, but we've probably, within that first year, already solved the smell with the two that we're concentrating on. Because if we have five or have six, we have two building officials and we don't have the staff that's gonna be able to go out there and check on them. So I think that if we, you know, that might be the only advantage to having it be a trial for the first year is we can kinda contain it, control it, study it, and really feel confident about opening it up maybe the next year. I don't know how you guys feel about that, but.
Would this be like, for instance, two retailers, two mezzo businesses, two microbusinesses? Or is it two of any and all?
I'm thinking the other things are okay, I'm thinking the cannabis.
So.
The limit to the cannabis.
Yeah, so it would be at places where cannabis retail can take place.
Yeah.
So you could say that you limit it to two cannabis retailers.
Yep.
And then say that cannabis, I would probably draft it as like cannabis mezzo businesses may operate a retail operation at the same location without being considered to have exceeded this number. If you'd like to have some sort of nuance to that, we could definitely draft it that way. I would play around with the words a little more, but the recommendation that I would note down is to permit, I didn't bring my pen, or is this, is this my pen? Not limit if they're connected to the same facility with the mezzo and the micro.
Yeah, and I'm only saying that because I really think that the public is gonna just want that assurance.
Right.
That they're not, we're not gonna have something come in here and it's just gonna get out of control.
Yeah.
And we got a whole bunch of potheads driving around the city, you know?
I agree, I think that's a good plan. I mean, how many liquor stores do we have, three?
I don't know.
So, well, you've got, EJ's, Route sixty-five. Well, it used to be Wayne's.
What's the one down here at the gas station up twenty-two?
Yep, yep, you've got.
And then almost every bar has off sale.
Five or six. So I guess, to your point, and again, I see where you're coming from with it. I guess my only, well, two major comments to that. One, for me, I don't personally, because again, some of the research I've done with it, I wouldn't just say some, you know, again, I don't see one of these opening up on every corner, everywhere all the time. The limited licenses, you know, by the state is obviously gonna limit some of this to begin with. You know, we got costs going behind it, the regulations behind it. There's already gonna be some deterrent there where it's not every mod pot, more or less, business trying to open up on every retail area. So I'm less concerned about the number of licenses to where I'd wanna restrict it, I guess. As you were describing it, I was more thinking, if there's gonna be a limit, maybe limit per zoning area. So if it was two in each type of area, because what might be off the highway versus on the highway might be completely different based on the business model, number one. And then number two, like most businesses, they're usually not gonna try to veer too far off where the high traffic areas are to begin with. So again, I don't see somebody opening up, you know, eight miles off the highway if there's not much for traffic there in the first place. So unless it was, again, a possible, you know, mezzo business type looking for more land to try to do something on, where there's less close to things.
See, and that's the one thing that I kinda disagree with because there's so few licenses that the state are giving out. The people that want to purchase, I don't think they're gonna care about convenience, they're just gonna go to wherever it's located and get it. So if they have to drive ten miles into somewhere to go get it, they're gonna drive it. It's not like, you know, it's not like a quick trip or something like that because a lot of, like the one I met is, I mean, it's a pain to get to it. But, you know, it was the only place open to open it.
So Matt, does staff have any input on this, any thoughts?
Yeah.
I think when we first were discussing it and we were kinda talking about rolling in very conservatively.
Yeah, okay.
Test the waters.
Cause I know staff is gonna get work out of this. And they're pretty taxed for how busy they are with the limited amount of people as it is.
I had seven, seven residents call me and talk to me before I came to this meeting. That were concerned parents. You know, and they weren't concerned, they weren't saying, oh my god, we don't want it there.
Yeah.
They're just, and I just, when I spoke to them, I said, absolutely nothing's gonna be decided at this meeting, we're talking about it. There's gonna be ordinances, it'll be regulated, and nobody's really against it. I think they're just apprehensive, and I think that whenever you make a change with something like this into a neighborhood, especially a residential rural area like us, which the majority of our city is, unless you're on sixty-five. I think they're just apprehensive, and then once they see it's not a problem, or that the city's really containing anything, I think they're pretty open, I mean, that's been my experience with the city. So, I mean, I don't obviously speak for everybody here, but I do think that, like the way that the ordinance is written now and then, you know, having a restriction to a couple, and I really don't think, I think if we don't restrict it, we're gonna overload our staff. We're gonna get a lot of questions from the community, and we're not going to be able to respond to them quickly. And then that added work is just gonna take them away from the other things that they need to get done with the small amount of staff that we already have. Because I think everybody's interested in this, and I don't necessarily think it's just residents that are gonna call. It's gonna be, everybody wants into this business. So they're gonna find out, you know, you're gonna have all of the liquor stores, the gas stations. You know, can I, can I sell oils, can I get some CDB, you know, lotion? Can I get all of this stuff in my retail store? And those, we have a lot of, you know, little shops in various areas. So, you know, that's just my, as I look at this, I see a whole bunch of little businesses wanting to get involved with this. And I think we, the city needs time to wrap their head around all of the things that it's gonna touch and be really careful because unfortunately, when we screw it up, it's a lot harder to fix and then come back to it, than if we start slow, do it right the first time, and then expand.
I'm not in disagreement, I don't think we need to completely rip the lid off the thing. You know, whether it's two, three, or five, I, you know, because there's varieties here. I think that, you know.
My worry would just be trying to obviously get too restrictive, and I can respect, again, not trying to overload. And again, and part of what I was saying with the distance, again, comes more from the business minded sense of all, you know, depending on where they can get in, of course, but
Yeah.
not trying to say there's gonna be one on every corner, but I would, I would hate to restrict the number of licenses to the point that it prohibits some from even trying.
Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about that, and I personally think that, you know, the decision about what that limit would be should be, you know, discussed with our, with Aaron and his team. They're the ones that are gonna know, you know, where they're, how they're gonna control it and how they're gonna manage it. So I think we, as a commission, can say, we think this is a great thing, we should go ahead and do this. But the council, if they're gonna put a limit on it, there should be a limit, but they should talk to staff. Talk about what they're gonna have to do, the extra workload, and what they can contain. And maybe the staff says, you know, maybe the building team says, we could do five, we could do ten.
Not to mention if this is for the first year. You know, and like this is, like I said, the good test pool of three to five, ten, whatever, whatever, you know, we think staff can handle. And then if, you know, everything goes swimmingly up to this, you know, for the first year, absolutely. You know, this isn't too restricted, it's to test, you know, and I'm with you on not wanting to.
Well, like I said, and where I come from on the not trying to be too restrictive is, I mean, again, even just the way this reads in H is, we're talking about retailers, mezzos, yeah, the endorsement folks, micro, and then the micro piece of it. And those are, that's a variety of different business types in this subcategory. So like I said, reducing, let's just say we had three.
Could we do three of?
Oh, the, okay, that's where I, that's where I say, depending on which zone or which area you wanna try to, try to put that in. I just, like I said, I'd hate to try to be so restrictive of, well, we've got our one retailer, sorry, no one can have a micro, no one can have a mezzo.
You know, and again.
I don't think it's written that way, is it? I mean, you can have, there's, there's.
You can do whatever you want.
Yeah.
That's why I'm trying to say, I would wanna not be so reduct, reduced to just flat one license or if it's, okay, two per each category, to get a better idea. I agree, let's not overdo it, but.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the mezzo businesses, and my, I guess my statement I should have made clear, as far as the mezzo businesses and those that are gonna be adding those, I'm talking about the cannabis retailer out here, I think that's the one that we should really be careful about. And make sure, you know, them and then, you know, the, because those cannabis retailers and then the people that are gonna be doing, I can't remember what it's called, they're growing it.
Cultivating?
The cultivators. Those are the two I just think that we should make sure that we are careful about and walk in slowly. As far as the mezzo business and, you know, the endorsements of the edibles and things in retail. I mean, they can drive five miles and buy all the stuff they want, so why not bring the business here?
Well, and that's why I was saying, again, so if you're not careful with how you state it, then else and it comes out as, oh, you only got two licenses. Cause that's how I interpreted what you were saying.
Well, thanks for making me clarify my comment. So I'm specifically thinking about just the ones that I think are gonna cause more concern, which would be the cannabis retailers and the cultivators. Yeah.
I think the people doing these businesses are gonna see how many are available. And we're one city in the state, I mean, you start dividing up, people, you're not gonna get five of them in our town.
Well, that's why I was saying.
Because, I mean. I mean, first off, we're not at the Mall of America, you know? And so I think, I like your idea of two or three each.
Yeah.
Is a good, good worded way to start it, maybe? And of course, council and staff can have input and make the change and.
Well, absolutely, and that's why we're an advisory committee, we're taking our time now to go through whatever said topic might be just to speak at large about what we do here. And again, give said recommendation, I'm hoping council's going through our minutes and getting to the root of where we came to our decision, especially if they're questioning it, right?
Absolutely.
Right? Outside of that, but that's, yeah, so that's why, like I said, I appreciate being open to the discussion, if not, being said. But, yeah, I'm not opposed to limiting, but I would at least like to see it, at least a number per each category to, again, give us that opportunity to get our arms around each type of business because each type of business is different, and that's why they have it listed different.
Yeah, and that's why I said I really think that we can have the, you know, ask that the staff, Aaron and his team, take a look at the regulations that are in the zoning amendment so that they understand their workload as we're bringing on these businesses.
And a reasonable, and a reasonable number per category, because like I said, your cultivator type might be a lesser number whereas your, like I said, your endorsement or your micros might be higher. And because that's, again, what they might be trying to go for.
So I'm hearing consensus, I've jotted down for whenever you get to a point of making your formal recommendation, it would be as amended tonight, and so what I'm drafting for the as amended tonight is limiting it to two to three of each type. So I would draft that language later, but as far as that recommendation, it would be, if you adopted as amended tonight, it would be to allow two to three of each of those three different types of businesses.
I like the two to three.
Me too.
I'd say, yeah, on the three end of it, because again, limited number of licenses.
Right.
Why not give them the opportunity, we're creating our own limit, there's limit in the state, and the state is pretty big, so.
Yep, three, yeah.
Great. So our next question before you tonight is distance requirements. Do you want to require these businesses, cannabis businesses, we're talking about right now, be a thousand feet from schools, five hundred from daycare, five hundred from residential treatment facilities, and five hundred from attractions and parks? Do you not want to have any of those, or do you want some sort of in-between those distances?
If I could vote them longer, I'd do that, yeah. I, some of these things like five hundred feet from a residential treatment facility, that seems ridiculous to me. You know, somebody's going to treatment and they walk out, you know, and here across the highway is, you know, Bethel Marijuana. You know, I just, if I could vote them higher, I would.
The only thing I would say to that, just in a counterpoint for discussion sake though, is you don't always know who creates a sober house. Right? So if all of a sudden I decide I'm a retailer, or I'm a real estate investor and I decide I wanna, I've got some of these properties, you know, I don't wanna rent them out anymore and I wanna convert my business, and now I'm gonna have a sober house for Teen Challenge, what have you. And now all of a sudden, I've put either that there, or now I'm restricting because you don't always know, in some of those, in that scenario.
Yep, yep.
Just to create a discussion point on it.
You know, I wouldn't wanna put my sober house, you know, within a thousand feet of a.
I'm not saying I'd be in agreeance of that either, but you never know.
I understand what you're saying there, it creates more restrictions elsewhere.
Yes.
Yeah.
I will say, it wouldn't prevent a business from coming to an existing business. So let's say, like your example, let's say a residential treatment facility decides they're going to set up shop within five hundred feet from one of these. It wouldn't automatically boot the existing business, and that use would be able to continue. That's something I should have clarified earlier.
My bigger concern would be, let's just say there's a farmhouse somewhere along the highway within that three quarters of a mile, and that's what they bought, and now, and it butts up to an industrial or, you know, a B-one or B-two district. That would make sense right off the highway, but it's within that proximity because the, when the land was sold or plotted, the house went off to the side and this is here, and now you can't have a piece of prime real estate. Or if it was bigger and it wasn't cultivated or something like that, but because it was backed up to a house on the other side of the tree line and it's four hundred and ninety feet, they can't operate as a result of. So would just be the mindset of, what's the other side of the coin look like?
Sure.
And I have a question about type, like the cultivator. For example, around a school or park, anywhere where there's kids that are underage, I would say, as you said, some of them will go from the property line, thousand feet. And some will go from the buildings, the main buildings. And I would like to know if we can make a difference in those. So if you have some other business, I guess if it, for a cultivator type, I would not like to see a marijuana field across from the football field.
Sure, so the school, as drafted, is from the property line.
Okay.
The daycare is the principal building, the main reason for that is you can get those sometimes in a strip mall. So it's a little hard to measure a lot line. The residential treatment facility is more general, I think that's a little bit open for interpretation, and there's kind of a benefit to having some open to interpretation there. And then as far as within a park, the way that the statute is written, it is an attraction within a public park, and the big reason there is you have linear parks, right, trails? And then it's like, you can't have anything for a long time because we have a trail that alongs all along. I wouldn't put one there, but like, let's say there's one all along Highway sixty-five, boom, no businesses. So it has to be an attraction within a park. So for some of your bigger parks, I found where the playset is or where the ball field is. And so it's measured from the playground or the ball field. Another option, you could do, interpret, this is again, open for interpretation. There's like a picnic area where people are having, you know, a kid's birthday party. You could interpret that as an attraction within a public park for kids as well.
Well, two, two things, one question, you say, how close does this follow, let's say, like what the liquor laws would be?
So liquor is five hundred feet from a school.
From a school, okay, so this is already more restrictive than that, based on what this language is. Some of the areas I have a concern with on the distances, and again, this is, I say this as a concern about, for discussion, not the hard and fastness, but like I look at where Lexington and Viking come together, and we've got a daycare that just opened up there in the last two years.
Yep.
And that's great, it's a wonderful service, I'm sure they do a great job, but you also have
EJ's.
A Dollar General, EJ's Speedway. You've got three businesses that have been there even in a longer period of time. And if I try to look at this from a, from the low end or from a, almost like a tobacco type or liquor license piece of it, like I said, you've got an EJ's right there that. Like I said, you've got an EJ's right there that if they decided to, could they or could they not? Same thing with Speedway or a Dollar General where they all have tobacco licenses as well.
And I'll just jump in again as a clarifying point, we're talking about cannabis, not hemp, so all of those, nope, this happens at every meeting, that's why I start with the definitions. Even myself, sometimes I'm like totally lost, um, so any of those restaurants, any existing places, um, that are sell, have any sort of liquor license. This wouldn't apply to the types of sales that they would be doing, this would be if they completely like closed their doors and did a complete remodel. And and were able to obtain one of those couple of cannabis licenses for retail. Um, so this is cannabis businesses, cultivation, testing facilities, all of that, not lower potency hemp.
Okay, so you have the one modification on the suggestion, um, what do you have next for us to consider?
Uh, this is it, so if you're, yeah, oh, well, yeah, so let's.
I don't have any.
Do you have any consensus on?
I don't have any other concerns with the rest of it, do you guys?
Um, one thing to also mention here, which I don't have it in the presentation, um, because it's a little different. Um, you can, and I have it drafted in here, um, from discussions with city staff about concentration of these types of businesses. Um, drafted into your ordinance is that cannabis businesses need to be a thousand feet from each other, that's to spread them out. You don't have to have that, look, some, getting some nods already that we're okay with that, at least, you know, revisit this in a year, see where it is, okay. Cool, um, so then the next thing, um, these are just the close up images.
And again, that and that is, and restricted to the cannabis piece of it.
Yes, cannabis only, and then no distance requirements for hemp, um, and that's because you've got restaurants everywhere, you've got liquor stores, it's gonna be a lot harder. And that's kind of what city councils have gone with. Um, so then the next recommendations are their performance standards, we already kind of talked about these. Um, the only thing I think that we haven't talked about yet is the hours of operation. Um, for now, we have it restricted as allowed by state statute. And then for lower potency hemp edible, I copied and pasted your liquor, um, because a lot of these are going to be sold at liquor stores. Or, um, restaurants and it wouldn't make sense to allow liquor sales to consider, like continue and vice versa. Um, so it looks a little funky and that's because liquor hours are funky, um, so if there's no, um. Is there kind of consensus on the performance standards as drafted?
I like the hours of operation based on what the state is allowing and, yeah, and in addition with the liquor piece of it to to mirror that piece.
And I've, yeah, had most of my concerns at rest already, so.
All right, um, so now we're into zoning districts, um, so we don't have to go into each of these if you'd like, um, we can. Um, you don't have to, if you want, you can prohibit. This in all of your residential districts except industrial, if you want. Um, so you don't have to allow a cannabis cultivator in a rural residential area if you don't want to. Because they are allowed in your light industrial district, so when we're looking at these and I'll just kind of, they're. This is all starting on page five of the ordinance, if it's simpler to look at that. Um, but if you want to change these, it's totally optional, um, if you want to change it so it doesn't have to be a conditional use. It sounded like from our discussion, um, presentation that we're interested in having the conditional use. Um, so at this point, if you wanna have any, um, discussion about removing, um, some of these uses from any of the districts, that would be an option. Um, so if you want to allow rural residential cultivation, again, indoor only, um, that's what's proposed. Um, for your limited business district, um, just retail. And that's in your B one, I honestly couldn't tell you, um, which one is the, the B one.
I think for me, it just, I'm gonna jump in.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, for me, I I like how they have it drafted. I don't like the idea, again, of of creating more restriction with it because, to be honest, I think I'd like to rather just see what. Even comes before us and with, again, using the conditional use tool, again, we can make it as. In an effort to not say no, we can always make it as restrictive as we need to, to get our. Our own minds comfortable with it, and if that's how they choose to operate and to abide. More power to them, which again, gives us that ability to have it not need it instead of need it and not have it and. Maybe there is an opportunity that, again, cause it's not our business, right, it's not our business model, someone wants to come forward and go. Yep, I've got this idea for this spot and it's like, oh, that makes sense, if you can do X, Y, Z. They say, eh, okay, we're willing, then then great, and if they comply, if not, out, that's their business.
I don't, I don't have any changes I'd like to see made here as far as the zoning is concerned.
No, actually, um, I don't know about you guys, uh, if you went through, but, you know, I'm taking a look at the section four all the way through. Even through the registration and application procedures, I think this is written very well and everything in here. Um, I have no concern, I've had no concerns with, as I've been reviewing this, I don't know if any of you guys do. I'm just trying to save you sometimes from having to read it all, cause I think we, this group had, I mean, we have a tendency to read it all.
That's great.
Before we come. So, so just to kinda spare you some time, um, you know, I, any of the part, any of the things that I was concerned with, we've already discussed. That I had on the whole, um, ordinance draft. And, um, I don't, you know, I can't speak for you guys.
I'm good.
So if you like that, then the motion would be to, um, recommend the ordinance as amended tonight, um, to the city council for approval.
Do we have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And there we have it.
So go before council.
The twenty-third.
Twenty-third, thank you. Thank you, you did a wonderful job. Very clear, you've had the experience with it and gone through, thanks for give, thanks for fine tuning it for us last.
Can I, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.